Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the May 2nd, 2019 Meeting of the Lebanon County Commissioners. And as is customary for beginning our meetings, we'll begin with a moment of silence. Thank you. Now please join me in the place to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, we will begin with public comment, and first is our Back to the Gap, Mr. Weisnick.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Weisnick. Forty New Town Gap giving you your Back to the Gap update. As of today, we've had over eighty-one thousand troops utilize Forty New Town Gap. This coming week, or this week, we're going to have over fifty-seven hundred troops on post. The following week, we're going to have over twenty-eight hundred troops on post. I will note, starting on the thirteenth of May, and hopefully running for about a month, we're going to have one of our big warfighter exercises. That will be an increased demand of activity around the post. Hopefully they'll partake of coming into Lebanon County and going to the store and doing stuff that bleeds off to our economy. Our prescribed burn season is going to be over with for this spring on the third of May. Just to remind everybody, as Angela Kingslight put out, anybody that wants to get alerts for what days that we're doing fires, that we smoke in the area, they can go to the Alert PA website for the red alert and sign up for the Forty New Town Gap alerts. Also, I want to remind everybody, follow us on Facebook. That seems to be our most effective means for the Forty New Town Gap Facebook page of getting things put out. Sadly, you'll be happy to know, second through the fifth of May, we'll be doing demolitions training. And in the training corridor, fourth through the sixth of May, we'll be doing live fire exercises with mortars. And on the seventeenth through the nineteenth of May, we'll be doing a field artillery live fire exercise. Want to remind everybody that we have the second busiest heliport in the United States Army, Mirror Army Airfield, multiple flights a day. Appreciate everybody's patronage on that. Also, put in a plug for this coming Tuesday on seven May, Lebanon Valley Chamber of Commerce is going to have their Military Appreciation Breakfast. We're a member of that committee. It's going to be at the Stony Ridge Poplar Run in Myersstown. They still have tickets available. Honors all veterans, those that have served in the military. So please come on out pending any of your questions. That's all we have.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Always informative.
Okay.
Thank you very much, David. Just wanted to, I should have mentioned that the very outset of the meeting, Commissioner Phillips, I think is on the line. Commissioner Phillips, are you there?
Maybe he's not.
Maybe not.
He was breaking up. Maybe it got cut off.
I remember Jamie, I remember Jamie, when he was addressing that, I suppose. Well, hopefully we'll get that clarified. But we next have Mr. Como, who is here to talk to us about hotel tax. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I just have some questions, and I'm looking for a little guidance in relation to the hotel tax. And just a little background information, in 2017, there was a local organization that received a $50,000 grant to start up a new program. And at that time, Commissioner Ames, you told them that this was not to be an annual request for funding, that this was to start up the program. Yet last year, they received $25,000 again. I don't know if they received anything this year. I'm not worrying about them, or this isn't about them. But that was just an example. In June of 2018, we, meaning the Friends of Coleman Memorial Park, applied for a hotel tax grant in the amount of $24,000 or $25,000 to repair the doors at the amphitheater because we felt it was becoming a safety issue. We were starting to have, whenever they opened the doors, there's like metal shards raining down on people on the stage. That's a sign of a problem. So we had diverted some of our other funds into the doors because Commissioner Litz recommended or made a motion that our grant be approved, and it was not seconded. So then Commissioner Phillips made a motion that we be granted the maximum amount of $10,000, which we thank you. It certainly helped. But my question is, I got a copy, thank you Kathy for providing them, I got a copy of all the grants in 2017 and 2018 that were approved, for some of them well over the $10,000 amount. So we are in the early planning stages of some major infrastructure improvements at the park. Several of our water lines are actually terracotta, to give you an example of how old those water lines might be. They're deteriorating. We've been putting Band-Aids on these fixes for a number of years. So we're in the very early stages of major infrastructure upgrade planning. And I just want to know, what do we have to do, or what is the criteria, to get more than the $10,000, like so many of these other agencies did? Because this is a major problem. I mean, we have bathrooms that get closed down halfway through the season because the pipes are just deteriorating that much. There's no electric in a lot of the park, in a lot of the pavilions, and after all these years, it's time to upgrade some of this stuff. So what, I don't understand why so many have approved for over the max, and then others can only get the max. So any kind of guidance, or anything you can help me with that? It'll really help us in our planning right now.
I think what we generally try to do is to weigh, because it is the hotel tax, we try to weigh the grants against the direct relationship to drawing folks to the county. And we had a study done back when we started to work on the Visitors Program, the TPA and so on. We commissioned a study, and the study showed that the fairgrounds and the Expo Center is responsible for bringing thirty to thirty-five percent of the overnight stays, in other words, the hotel tax, to the county. So I think that would explain our generosity to that. The, we referred, I think, to the holiday lights. Yes, I did make that statement, and essentially what I was saying is that, you know, don't come back for $50,000 every year. That, my understanding is that the CLA had indicated that if and when they make a profit on the holiday lights, it would be designated for Coleman Park. I think that's, I'm making that as a correct statement. So that perhaps shed some light on those decisions, at least on my part. I can't speak for either of the other two members of the board.
Well, I mean, if you're asking for guidance, the guidance I would suggest, Pam, is that develop some sort of a survey online, as visitors come to your July 4th, to your things that are held at the amphitheater. Ask them to fill in the survey, collect those surveys, tabulate them. Like I say, online would be ideal, but the reality is, if you can get somebody that's there, that's the most important. You need to document how many of your people, or if any people, are coming from outside of Lebanon County, because the tourism dollars have to be spent for tourism. So if you can show that ten percent are coming for tourism, to me, that speaks a lot, because there are thousands of people there. So that would mean they're especially going to use restrooms and not run home. If they want to lay down or something, they're there for the duration. So somehow, document visitors to the park from outside the area, and make that part of any grant application that's used of them. That would be my guidance.
Okay. We do have that information, because we know where the ball teams come from out of the state.
Okay.
When they're playing in that area. We know that music in the park who co-sponsored the application with us also brings in several acts from outside the state, actually. So we do have that type of information.
A one-page summary, you know, emphasizing those kinds of things, to me, would say, hey, this deserves more than $10,000.
Okay, so there is more than $10,000 available, and that is not always the maximum amount?
It's maximum for local projects that do not show, as I said, unequivocally, that there are outside visitors coming. I mean, we do small grants, like for instance, Principal Landbill just did one, I think, for $3,000 to advertise, to bring people from outside of the area to the county. They're targeting that for the advertising, so we funded that.
And this is the same criteria asked of all these organizations?
Okay.
If I could add something to Pam. If you can ask for a grant directly in relationship to attracting, like Commissioner Litz said, or promoting and so on, rather than for infrastructure. I'm not saying that we couldn't give it for infrastructure, but I think it's, what our intention is, is to have it more directly related. I realize that, you know, you can't have people come in if you don't have bathrooms. But if we could, if you can at least make the request and write the grant so that it deals with the direct production of the events and things like that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, and that's why we thought the doors at the amphitheater met all of the criteria that you had both just mentioned, so that's why. It was just a little confusing, because there was no other reason given, other than that's the maximum amount.
Well, I think what I'm hearing Commissioner Ames saying, I don't want to speak for him, he can obviously correct me, but in other words, use your personal dollars for the toilets, and then the money you apply for, use for promotion and things, bringing in the outside people.
Thank you. That's a very good clarification.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, Pam.
I also have rack cards of all the events going on at the park. I'll leave them out at the desk if anybody wants.
Wonderful, yeah. And you're getting those to the tourism folks, right?
They already got them. Oh, yeah. They're first on the list, Expo second.
Expo Center?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Thank you for your efforts. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Phillips, I heard this phone, or some issues going on with that one, so... Okay. Commissioner Phillips, you're back with us then?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Gordy.
With regard to funding for the holiday lights program, you went from $50,000 to $25,000. Does the county feel as though it's gotten some sort of bang for the buck out of that program? Because everything that I seem to have heard is that turnout has not been especially large.
It certainly wasn't this past season, but, you know, just like the fair, you know, we can't create the weather the way we'd like to have it. You know, the fair lost a lot of money this past summer, and the Expo, or the holiday lights was raining almost every night. So it's tough to judge, you know, the first year being what it was the first year, and then the second year, when they felt they would really be able to make some progress, the weather was certainly not encouraging. But do I, I personally think, when you say a bang for the buck, probably we didn't get the rewards from, you know, that kind of investment that we should have. That would be my take on that, Commissioner.
I haven't seen the profits or losses from this past year. That would certainly be beneficial, to make comment.
So one of the criteria that you've stated for reason is bringing people from outside the county in. Have you seen anything to demonstrate that that indeed did happen with holiday lights?
I haven't seen the report, so I don't know. That's what I'm saying. It would be very helpful to see a report, so we could answer those questions.
I do know that it was promoted outside the county, but to answer your question specifically, no, I do not know how many folks were attracted from outside.
So at this point in time, the board certainly wouldn't feel prepared to say what it would be willing to commit to holiday lights for the upcoming seasons?
Commissioner Phillips, are you hearing the questions?
Yes, yep.
Do you have any comment?
No, I, as far as the Coleman Park investment?
Well, Gordy is asking questions about the holiday lights, and, you know, whether we would be, after the first two opening seasons, whether we would be up to committing, I guess, a significant investment again for the third year.
Yeah, I guess I'd have to see what their presentation is, because I felt that after the first year, we would have been in better shape, since we made such a large commitment. But again, the weather, and maybe the fact that they charged versus free, had a bearing on the attendance. So I think, you know, we think based a lot of our support on their credibility, you know, pitching the issue. So if they came back with something, I'd look at anything, you know, related to continuing if, you know, had merit.
Anything else? Anyone else have any comments on the tourism grants? All right, then, I guess we're ready for the approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
I have a second. Have a motion in a second to approve the minutes as printed. Any questions or comments concerning the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. We have some nice things that we like to do coming up here in the next couple weeks, so.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
You going to make the introductions, Kevin?
Can do that, yeah. Today, we're here with Debbie Sheffler from our staff. She is, she out this weekend, today she went to put on her ID, and the lanyard broke, so it means that it's time for her to go, I guess. So although she was planning on it anyway, tomorrow's Debbie's last day. She is a case manager in our children's unit. Not that any unit is any more important than the other, but I agree, all this special spot in our hearts for children, and Debbie has been working in our department with children. You've been in our department, I think, a total of twenty-seven years, twenty-six? Somewhere between twenty-six and twenty-seven. So, and you've been in the children's unit for most of those years, the vast majority of those years. And I always, tomorrow's Debbie's last day, and I always knew that if I had somehow, I could draw into a case that was, you know, special or challenging, I always knew Debbie would be a strong match for the individual, and always has worked very hard to advocate for the children she served. So Debbie's special in that regard. She will march forward, and on her mission to help children, and has done that for all these years, and she will be greatly missed, but I'm happy for her that she's able to retire and move on.
Thank you, Debbie. It's been a pleasure knowing you, and I'm sure we'll bump into each other, unless you're moving to Florida or something. Well, I would gladly, do you want to read that first, or do you want to make the motion first?
Let's hear it.
Okay.
Whereas Debbie Sheffler friends began her career with the County of Lebanon, employed as a house parent for children in need services on June 15th, 1992. And whereas she continued her career as a caseworker for mental health and intellectual disabilities early intervention on May 31st, 1994. Debbie has proven herself to be an asset to the agency, the case manager of the team, and the child adolescent consumers seeking services. And whereas throughout her tenure as a diligent employee, Debbie's cooperation and willingness to share her resources with consumer families and coworkers has enabled her to thrive in this capacity. Whereas Debbie would exemplify integrity to her profession, served the county with devotion and commitment reflecting greatly on herself and Lebanon County government. And whereas, May 4th, 2019, Debbie will retire as a caseworker for the Office of Mental Health and Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention with over twenty-six years of distinguished service. Now therefore, we, the Commissioners of Lebanon County, on behalf of all our citizens, unite to thank Debbie for her many years of hard work, faithfulness, and dedication on a job well done. Further, we extend congratulations and best wishes for a most rewarding future and the very best retirement.
All right, now I'll accept the motion to adopt the proclamation.
I'll make a motion to...
He did motion, he wants a second.
Yes.
Sure. Again, I wish you all the best that life has to offer. You've committed the majority of your adult life, probably, to helping our children in need in Lebanon County, and for that, we are very grateful. Thank you.
All right, let us do the vote, then we have a motion in a second to adopt this proclamation. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's unanimous. I'm not even going to ask for no votes, I'm sure we can't get one today. I certainly want to thank you as well for your service, and before we actually present this to you, would you like to make some comments to the folks here today?
I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity to have worked with you, generally, over these last twenty-plus years.
Who's your friend under the table?
This is Bunny. Bunny came to start work with us about five years ago, four years ago. She's been a wonderful asset.
Wonderful.
Very nice. All right, we'll present this to you, and take our normal place for photographs here in the gallery. Kevin, are you going to do the photo? Debbie?
Just please.
Well, congratulations, on behalf of the County Commissioners, it's my pleasure to present you with this proclamation for your law, where you're residing in your retirement.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Good? Ready? Just one, two, good. Thank you very much. Kevin, thank you. It's a pleasure, all.
I'd like to say thank you. My name is Joella Litz, and I'm one of the Commissioners. And I understand that you are with Juniper Village.
That's right, yes.
And through the Red Cross, I learned of your generosity at Juniper Village in opening your doors to a group of people nearby who were burned out of their homes. And that's a fairly recent happening, and we just wanted to somehow say thank you, and recognize your generosity, and your heartfelt assistance to people in need speaks volumes for your organization. And so that's why we ask you to come here today, and we have a certificate of appreciation we'd like to present to you. But first, would you like to tell a little more about what happened that day?
Well, basically, our neighbors, YWAM, which is an organization that we've been working with for several years, individuals come as missionaries, basically, and they come to Juniper to try to improve their English speaking. And so they actually sit with a lot of our residents and our workers and things of that nature. So unfortunately, through the day that it happened, it was very early in the morning, after ten, and we saw the white smoke going up, and we knew that something tragic was going to be happening. So we, you know, as neighbors, I just went out and spoke to the, actually spoke to two ladies who had come to make them lunch, and realized, oh, these poor individuals, we're not going to have anything, and we could tell by the flames, it was going to be a pretty drastic change in their life. So I just felt that, you know, I went over and talked to many of the individuals, and at that point, I think there was thirteen to fifteen residents that were staying there. And they were from all over. They were from Vietnam, they were from Japan, from Nicaragua, from Venezuela, from Colombia. And we had met several of these young individuals. So I basically went over and just opened Juniper to them, knowing that they would not have anything. They were sitting on individuals' lawns, things of that nature. So I invited them to come over, just to kind of regroup, and to have a place, get them cell phones, so that they could call home, let individuals know what was happening, find chargers, because most of them ran out with their cell phone and their chargers. So just to try to comfort them, provided lunch for them, and really provided, Joella, I know you've been in our club, and provide them just an area where they could sit, they could talk, they could just try to regroup somehow. And I know the Red Cross, we had offered for them to come to, instead of being in their cars. So it was just a nice place that they could, you know, stay for seven, eight hours, and be together, pray together, and, you know, realize what was happening and occurring, try to make those plans for the next several days. So that's what happened that day. And then we did stay in contact with Ben, he's the director there, tried to help them with the massive amounts of laundry that they needed, you know, that they were able to salvage some of those things. So just to stay in contact with them, just to see how else we could help them.
You're truly good, Samantha, is reaching out like that, and you've set a wonderful example for the rest of the community. I think that in general, we pull together after a disaster, but you just drove the nail in and left us all know, this is what it's all about, we should do this every day.
We should do this every day. They are our neighbors, and I know one of my staff members asked me, you know, why did you do this? I mean, because they just saw me walking across, you know, across the lawn, and so I'm just, I always think of my mother, who always said, you know, if there's something to be done, go ahead and do it. You know, Dave, don't wait for someone to ask you, don't wait for someone to tell you. So I think that's always been in my career, to do those types of things. In my own mind, I just did what seemed to be needed, but I do appreciate you calling and offering this.
Well, thank you, then, at this time, I think we'll make the presentation.
Well, thank you, then, at this time, I think we'll make the presentation.
Thank you very much for your kindness and...
You're quite welcome.
Jel Marie, good job, thank you.
Oh, hi, Bob, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Congratulations. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you so, so much. Good work, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're done with all the nice things, let's have the Treasurers Report. I know, it's better.
Yeah, this is nice. If there's money coming in, it is nice.
Okay, we had receipts on four thirty and five one, two million one hundred sixteen thousand, twenty-six dollars and seventy-three cents. So that brought us to a total of cash of nineteen million, one hundred eighty-nine thousand, four hundred sixty-nine dollars and ten cents. Our expenditures this week were three million, five hundred ninety-four thousand, eighty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. The undistated tax claim, excuse me, is one hundred fifty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-two dollars, thirty-four cents, leaving us a balance of fifteen million, four hundred forty-three dollars, forty-three thousand, four hundred forty-three thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars and thirteen cents. Now, saying that, of course, Jamie and I look at this all the time, but we will be assigning money for this, at least two point four million for ARC payment this year, and of course payrolls, and I probably will do about at least ten of those payrolls possibly out of this, or maybe not quite that many at this time, but then toward the end of June, when before PAVLIT goes on, we'll get another influx, not like this one, but another one, and then maybe I can do the rest of the payrolls at that time. We already have put money away for our debt service in October, so we're there.
And the money that was transferred to get through the first couple of months, the reserve has been replaced, and that's been restored to the Reserve Fund. Sally mentioned two point four million going as a set aside for the required contribution of the pension, that's in addition to seven hundred thousand that's been carried over from last year because the ARC wasn't as high as it was originally anticipated. So the ARC is fully funded, the debt service for the fall is fully funded, and the rest will be set aside for payrolls, as she mentioned.
Well, having worked through restoring the finances to Lebanon County, we all know how important it is to make that ARC payment, so we budget for that now, and that's, we provide and we make that payment, so.
Yeah, and also that reserve is important because we don't have to loan that money at the beginning of the year.
Exactly.
And Sally, how much is, I guess it's every two weeks, the payroll? How much is it?
We usually put a million dollars aside for every two weeks, and sometimes it's a little bit more than that, that I set aside here.
But it's not a million dollars a week, it's a million dollars for two weeks. I was asked that this year, and I wasn't sure if it was...
No, we set aside a million for each payroll.
Thank you.
Any questions about the Treasurers Report? Bob, are you clear on what's happening here?
Yep. No questions, yep.
And I'll take a motion to accept the Treasurers Report as presented.
I'll so moved.
So moved.
Okay. I'll take, make one of those a second, Kathy, will you?
I'll take it. I'll take the second.
Okay. All right.
There's a second delay, I think.
Yeah, there is a little delay, that's confusing. All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the Treasurers Report, and there were no questions or comments, so with that in mind, all those in favor of accepting the Treasurers Report indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? All right, the Treasurers Report is accepted, thank you. If you keep bringing them like that, you can keep coming in.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question?
Sure.
All right, I don't remember that we made a motion to award Juniper Village a certificate, and so I...
We give those, it's routine.
But we always make a motion for us, right?
Not certificates.
Not certificates. All right, I thought we did.
With the documented...
Okay. Good enough, I wanted to make sure we didn't forget something. Thank you.
Good morning, ladies.
Good morning.
Human Resources Department, how are you this morning?
Good.
Good.
Michelle Edgers, Director of Human Resources.
Lee Enchain, Human Resources Assistant.
Under personnel transactions, resignations, and terminations, Maria Amato Fernandez, caseworker two, resignation effective May tenth. Sandra Brinker, caseworker two, resignation effective April fifth. Time Bozeman, full-time correctional officer, resignation effective May tenth. Madeline Morrissey, DJ clerk, resignation effective May tenth. Don Booton, probation officer one, resignation effective May tenth. Diane Luciotti, full-time LPN, resignation effective April twenty-sixth. Antonio Ruiz, full-time developmental assistant, resignation effective May first. And Carly Ebersol, part-time LPN, resignation effective May ninth.
All right, I have a motion to... Mr. Phillips, would you like...
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the terminations. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So ordered.
Under FMLA lees of absence, Rosemary Urban, Children in Youth, one year of intermittent FMLA, effective May first.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve that leave of absence. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So ordered.
Under changes of status, transfers, and promotions, Jeanne Potter, promotion from caseworker one at MHIDEI to caseworker two at MHIDEI, at the rate of one thousand three hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-seven cents, bi-weekly, effective May sixth.
I have a motion for the changes of status.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the change of status. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So ordered.
Under other transactions, Building Security would like to hire Cynthia Gettle as a part-time door monitor at the rate of ten dollars and forty-three cents per hour, effective May sixth.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the hiring. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So ordered.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following, Brett Noel Emick, incremental increase, full-time correctional officer at the prison, to sixteen dollars and fifty-six cents per hour, effective March tenth. And Claude Nice, incremental increase, corporal at the prison, to the rate of twenty-six dollars and forty-nine cents per hour, effective May fifth.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Aye.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the salary board changes. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion is approved. Thank you.
Under mandated conference seminars, I have Dan Kirk from Children in Youth would like to attend the following three trainings, all mandated by DHS. Assessing Safety in Out-of-Home Care in Mechanicsburg, May twenty-second and twenty-third, with Mileage Meals Tools Reversment, twelve credits. Out-of-Home Placement and Permanency Planning in Mechanicsburg, May twenty-ninth, thirtieth, and thirty-first, with Mileage Meals Tools Reversment, eighteen credits. Making Permanent Connections: Outcomes for Professional Development in Mechanicsburg, June sixth, Mileage Meals Tools Reversment, six credits. Marjorie Ulrich from Children in Youth would like to attend the following two trainings, also mandated by DHS. Methamphetamines Training in Mechanicsburg, May twenty-third, Mileage Reversment, six credits. Understanding and Working Effectively in Resistance in Families Training in Mechanicsburg, June fourteenth, Mileage Reversment, four credits. Rosemary Urban from Children in Youth would like to attend the following two trainings, also mandated both by DHS. Planning with Youth in Transition Tips, Tools, and Techniques in Mechanicsburg, July seventeenth in the AM, Mileage Meals Tools Reversment, three credits. The Casey Life Skills Assessment in Mechanicsburg, also July seventeenth in the PM, Mileage Meals Tools Reversment, six credits. Taylor Steinsider, Carmen Cortez, and Nicole Murillo from Children in Youth would like to attend Sex and Drugs Dual Companions Training in Mechanicsburg, May twenty-first and twenty-second, Mileage Meals Tools Reversment, twelve credits, mandated by DHS. Anna Marquez from Children in Youth would like to attend the Employee Performance Review Process in Mechanicsburg, May twenty-eighth, Mileage Meals Tools Reversment, six credits, mandated by DHS. Jessica McTavish from Children in Youth would like to attend the 2019 Interpersonal Violence Symposium in Mechanicsburg, May twenty-ninth, Mileage and Meals Reversment, six credits, mandated by DHS. Angelica Farisi from Children in Youth would like to attend the Adapting Mental Health Therapies for Dually Diagnosed Individuals in Mechanicsburg, May thirty-first, Mileage Meals Tools Reversment, four credits, mandated by DHS. Erin Moyer, Anna Marquez, Abby Casper, Daniel Gray, and James Dunn Moyer from Children in Youth and Drug and Alcohol would like to attend the Governor's Institute on Plans of Safe Care in Harrisburg, June fourth and fifth, with Mileage and Meals Reversment, mandated by DHS. Megan Raccoon, Rosemary Urban, and Mark Hare from Children in Youth would like to attend the Adolescent Suicide Assessment and Intervention in Mechanicsburg, June seventh, Mileage Meals Tools Reversment, six credits, mandated by DHS. Stephanie Swisher and Mark Hare from Children in Youth would like to attend the Engaging Clients from a Strength-Based Solution-Focused Perspective in Mechanicsburg, June twenty-first, Mileage Meals Tools Reversment, six credits, mandated by DHS. Jen Whitman from the District Attorney's Office would like to attend the PA Problem Solving Courts Coordinator Symposium in Hershey, May seventh and eighth, no reimbursement, twelve credits, mandated by the AORC. Stephanie Rodriguez from Probation Services would like to attend the Dangers, Drugs, Alcohol, Distracted Driving Training in Westchester, June third, no other reimbursement, seven credits, mandated by PBPP. And Jim Doty from Probation Services would like to attend the Evidence-Based Practice Leadership Academy in Wilkes-Barre, June fourth, fifth, and sixth, lodging and meals reimbursement, mandated by PBPP.
I have a question before the motion. We just approved Rose for some intermittent family leave. Is this point, these three trainings, going to interfere with her? No, okay, then I so moved to approve them.
Do I have a second? All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the attendance at the mandated conferences as read. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Mandated conferences are approved.
Under requested conference seminars, Jeffrey Ballard and Michael Collins from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the Knowledge Sharing Session for Sam's Administration in Gettysburg, May sixteenth and seventeenth, three hundred and fifty dollar total registration fee with lodging and tools reimbursement.
I'll...
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve that requested conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 It's approved.
Stephanie Hafiz from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the Health and Wellness Conference in State College, May second and third, one hundred and twenty-five dollar total registration fee with mileage, meals, and tools reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve that Area Agency on Aging requested conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
So ordered.
Marie Purvish from Area Agency on Aging would like to attend the Education Provider Session Phase Three in Coopstown, May fifteenth, Mileage and Meals Reversment.
So moved.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the conference in Coopstown. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So ordered.
Ruth Snyder from Community Action Partnership would like to attend the 2019 Dolphin County Addictions Conference in Mittletown, May fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth, seventy-five dollar total registration fee with mileage reimbursement.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve attendance at the Addictions Conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So moved.
Todd Hirsch from the DA's Detective Bureau would like to attend the Bloodstain Pattern Documentation Training in Doylestown, May twenty-first and twenty-fourth, four hundred and ninety-five dollar total registration fee with lodging reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second for attendance at that requested conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So ordered.
Gary Burna from Department of Emergency Services would like to attend the International Hazmat Conference in Baltimore, Maryland, June twelfth through the sixteenth, four hundred and forty dollar total registration fee with lodging, mileage, and meals reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to permit attendance at that hazmat conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So ordered.
Robert Dowd and Jason Weichl from Department of Emergency Services would like to attend the 2019 NINA Conference in Orlando, Florida, June sixteenth through the nineteenth, one thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollar total registration fee with lodging, meals, parking, tolls, airfare, and rental car reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I don't know why you want to go to Florida in June, but all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
So ordered.
Jocelyn Stacom from MHIDEI would like to attend the PHFA Multi-Family Affordable Housing Conference in Lancaster, June twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth, three hundred and thirty dollar total registration fee with lodging, mileage, and meals reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second for attendance at that conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So ordered.
Dawn Policia from the Treasurers Office would like to attend the Annual Treasurers Association Conference in Cranberry Township on June eleventh through the fourteenth, two hundred and fifty dollar total registration fee with lodging, mileage, and tools reimbursement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to attend the Treasurers Conference. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Getting on to that delay, you noticed that? Yep. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
How are you today?
Good morning.
Good, good to see you. You may proceed whenever you're ready.
Introduce yourself first. Bob Dowd, Director of the Department of Emergency Services. And I'm here this morning with a grant, it's the Hazardousness, Emergency Preparatives Grant. It's a three-year grant. We're applying for year one at this point. The total amount we're applying for is twenty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars. We have a local match of that, that'll be four thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty cents, which comes out of hazard. The grant will be used for commodity flow study, which is basically just counting dangerous and things that come through the county. It's also used to send two team members to state conference, hazmat technician refresher classes, and our annual subscription costs to Lux County Community College, who we use for librarians.
I'll make a motion to approve the requested commodity flow study for twenty thousand eight hundred and ninety...
The actual, the entirety of one, not just the commodity.
Motion is to apply, approve the grant. All right, I have a motion and a second to make that application. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So ordered. Mr. Dowd?
Thank you. One note, hopefully you caught the email from Deputy Morales, there's an exercise on Tuesday for TMI.
I caught it. All right.
The annual TMI exercise. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Opposed? So ordered, Mr. Dowd.
Thank you. One note, hopefully you caught the email from Deputy Morales. There's an exercise on Tuesday for TMI.
Yes.
The annual TMI exercise. Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
I have two ordinances to present to you, and then we'll go to your retirement board report. I've asked two individuals to join me here, one for each of these. First is Austin Colley of the Associated Builders and Contractors. Austin and his boss were here back in March.
That's true.
At one of your workshops to present the concept of this ordinance, which has been, I guess you've been working your way around the state, kind of, or?
Oh, yeah, we've been going to county.
Promoting this ordinance to be adopted, and several counties have done so. The, the, perhaps the ordinance essentially would be to ban the use of project labor agreements, known as PLAs, on any, any government contracts, primarily building contracts is where they, I guess, sometimes present themselves. To my knowledge, we've not experienced this in Leaven County at this point. I think what's, what's in play is the Associated Builder Contractor Members are going around, especially locally, and you had a local contractor here back in March joining Austin for this. Whereby, if a, if a government bids a contract, there could be potentially pre-arranged agreements for labor that may not be local labor. That's kind of, I guess, a good summary. Is there anything else?
Yes, that's correct. So if a project labor agreement, project labor agreement is in place under a bid for a project, that clause, the project labor agreement itself, would require the contractor who awarded that bid to then hire their labor out of the prescribed labor hall. So therefore, open shop contractors, like Arthur Fong, who came in and talked, they would not be able to use their employees. They would be then forced to, again, pull labor out of the prescribed labor hall.
So again, that's not something I know, that I'm aware we've experienced at this point, but some counties hadn't either, and are now seeing these being proposed.
Correct. Last week we had talked about a library in Franklin County in Chambersburg. It was a small project, but one of our members was looking through bid documents, and again, it's, it's just one little clause, and said that he needs to adhere to these rules, and obviously, it can be a problem.
Commissioner?
Yes?
I would like to ask to have this tabled today. I got to read it this morning, and I noticed Section 2, the wording has changed from what was presented to us previously. And the wording that was in the original said the county shall not require a contractor on a construction project to execute or otherwise become a party to a project labor agreement as a condition of bidding, negotiating, awarding, or performing a contract. I thought that was kind of straightforward, and I really liked that language, but what's in here now is a lot, well, to me, it's a lot different, and...
What was your review by some counsel?
Yeah, I'm not sure. What you just read is what I have.
It's not what I'm reading. Oh, I'm sorry, then that's the one that was there. I, I got the wrong one. All right, hold on a second.
Yeah.
All right. Shall not include any of the following in bid specification, projects, agreements, or other binding documents. There we go. A project labor agreement that requires or prohibits a bidder, contractor, or offer from entering into or adhering to an agreement with one or more labor organizations in regard to that project or a related construction project. A project can be a project labor agreement that otherwise discriminates against a bidder, contractor, or offer for becoming, remaining, or refusing to become or remain a signatory to, for adhering, refusing to adhere an agreement with one or more labor organizations in regard to project or any related construction project. The wording got changed.
I think you're reading from the definitions.
It says Section 2, everything else follows.
Okay, well, what you read the first time is what, you said you referred is what is...
I, I, I was, I got mixed up. I thought I had the other paper.
That's what I have before you, is the, is what you read initially.
Right.
Are you seeking a motion?
I was looking to table the motion for today because I need to get this clarification on this language.
You?
I, I oppose the motion. As long as our counsel has reviewed it, I'm good to make a motion that we accept it as presented.
Jamie seems to think that what you read the first time is what we're voting on. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct, but it's changed from what was submitted, and that's why I'm confused. And I'd like to have that explained to me and by the attorney, yes, whoever changed it, why it was changed.
Well, you, you said you're satisfied with the language that you've just read.
I'm not, I'm not.
Oh, you're not, no?
I, I said, I, I read them one. I'm, I'm wondering why this one is different, and that's, if you follow down through, that's the one that was changed, and I don't understand why the change is.
Okay, I'd have to see what you have, what your everyone is. But that's the packet that was broadcast in March, I think.
Yeah.
And that may be an example of another one. Austin, do you know? Are you, okay. I'm not sure. I have, I'm, this is a packet from back in...
That's when they were here before.
That would be in Lancaster.
Yeah, that might, yeah, that could be an example of another one.
I took that to be your presentation as to what the language should be.
You know, actually, Commissioner Liz, when they left that day, we said, get us suggested language.
And that's what he gave us.
Yeah.
And that's what we were given.
Well, the, the, the language that they provided, that, that I put before you is, was the, was the ordinance that ABC sent then when we asked for a, essentially a, so I, I can acknowledge that what you saw back in March was an example of an ordinance, but that's not what was put before you.
But all the other sections are the same, and that's why I didn't understand why that one was changed. That has not been explained.
I think it was more, it was, it's more concise, I think, is the way Section 2 is written, but...
Clearer.
I'm not, I'm not sure it was changed for any, any detrimental way. It was just, it was just written more concisely than what was there before, so...
Our solicitor has reviewed it.
Yeah, I mean, are you, are you saying that Section 2 on the proposed ordinance is not something, are you saying it's just simply a change, which is true?
It changed, and I don't understand the changes because it's not what was submitted to us.
It's the same as what's included in Section 2. It's just that, it's just worded in a, you know, more concise way.
Well, you're, are you making a motion to table it?
Yes, sir.
I have a motion to, to table the, the adoption of this ordinance, ordinance 59, is it?
Yes, work 59.
Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion for discussion.
We've already discussed it, but anyway, okay.
So only that, I think it, it did say, we reviewed this, our counsel had, and so I see we'll move to, well, the, the motion today.
Well, from my point of view, I prefer and support local contractors and want our small businesses to get work, okay? But we get one shot to get this right, and I'd like to make sure that we do get it right. And since it was altered from what was submitted to us, I'd like that explained to me by our attorney why the change is. I don't quite understand it. That goes beside the fact that we can always write our bid requirements to disallow PLAs. I don't think that this step is necessarily necessary, but if I can get a, you know, convincing argument from our solicitor, I'd be willing to consider that. And the other thing is that, from my understanding, this is for projects $25 million and over...
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty, no, no, twenty-five thousand is where we have to bid. That's a federal law.
The prevailing prevailing wage gets in. Correct. This does not affect that at all. And to go back to your other question about you guys manage the bids, but in the instance where the project management firm would come in to take over a construction project, and the county without this ordinance would then lose the power to have a say in where they are, whether they put this PLA in the bid specification.
Well, I'm going to use, the, the one project I know of coming up is the 911 Center, and I expect that to come in between 10 and 15 million dollars, which is under the $25 million federal threshold, and...
Twenty-five million isn't a threshold. Twenty-five thou, $20,000 is a bid threshold in the county code. Twenty-five thousand is the bid threshold for, is the project threshold for prevailing wage to kick in, but then there's nothing beyond that.
For the PLAs, the federal government said 25 million.
I have no further of that.
I have that written on, at any rate, in the, in example of the 911 construction, I believe that we would be hiring a local architect of record, which could be Funks, because I know that they often do that for us. But in, in reality, there are subject matter experts, and there's only about a dozen of them in the entire United States, and we're going to have to hire them, and they are going to probably come from outside the area because they know all the laws.
You're mistaking, this is not a hiring of labor, not a hiring of a planning firm or anything like that. And what typically happens is that the PLA would specify that you have to hire, let's say, electricians from local number 646 in Hanover, Pennsylvania. That's what we're trying to prevent. This is, this will not limit the, the contractors that we hire, or the planning groups that we hire at all.
I would really like the courtesy of the time to sit down with Dave and, and discuss this Section 2, to make sure that we're not unduly burdening the, the builders, or us, or anybody, and why the changing of the words.
It wouldn't no way limit the county's power to hire anybody. It's just, the PLA, when PLA is put on a project, it then carves out only 14% of the construction industry. Eighty-six percent is open shop of construction, eighty-six percent of workers. So when a project labor agreement is put on a bid, those workers cannot work on this project. But by not having a PLA on a project, anyone can work on it, and that's what we're trying to prevent, and that's what we're trying to hope to happen.
This has nothing to do with the Architective Record. That's a professional service that you can select any, anyone that you want without any bidding under county code for, for the planning and the professional services, which the past has been, you know, Beers Hoffman would utilize it so, and Arthur Funkensun that you mentioned is a contractor. So they may well bid on the project, but, but what you mentioned as far as planning and so on, the, this, there's no, this doesn't even address that. That's professional service, just like you would for engineer, for architect, or anything in a service like that. This is to say that if Arthur Funkensun, or, I'm using that example because, because Ken Funk was in here back in, in March, if they bid on a project with, without a PLA included in the, in the contract, they may utilize their employees, who would still get prevailing wage, but it would be their local employees, with a project labor agreement inserted into the contract. They would, he would be required to hire, as Commissioner Ames said, from a union shop elsewhere in that trade. So it's, I mean, bottom line is if, if you're in favor of ensuring and guaranteeing that local labor employed by local contractors are used, then, then that's what this would do. The, the language differences that you're referring to are simply a, a more concise way of saying the same thing. So they came in in March and presented something, we asked for a, I think, a sample ordinance to utilize, and that's Section 2, since it was boiled down, it was not changed, the intention of it, and then, and what it accomplishes is no different than what was discussed back in March. So nothing, nothing has changed, essentially. I mean, this, it's just we look to put in a format that was advertised and accomplishes the same thing that the other counties have, have put in place so far, and that's, okay, I'll stop there.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to, yeah, we have a motion on the floor, Commissioner Phillips, to table this, and I'm going to call for the vote. All those in favor of tabling the, this issue to future time indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion loses 2 to 1. Now we'll take action on the ordinance. Do I have a motion to adopt the ordinance as, as presented?
I will.
Do I have a second? I will second the motion. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 59 as presented. Is there any comment or discussion?
I'd just like to reemphasize that I support our local contractors, and I want to maintain the small businesses here and, and see that they continue to grow, but we only have one shot to get this right, and I'm not comfortable moving ahead, and that's why I asked to have a table with a little more time so I can sit down and sort through this with Dave. I, I just don't think that I'm getting the time I need to do that. Since there was a change, I'm not comfortable with it.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting ordinance 59 indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries 2 to 1.
All right, the second ordinance item I have, Chris Gebhardt is here with us from Oster Gebhardt, the county's producer on the general liability and property coverage that we have through the Pennsylvania County Risk Pool. And the county's risk pool has asked each county to adopt an ordinance that they have provided. In your case, it would be ordinance number 60 of the county. And Chris, do you want to do anything in terms of what this accomplishes?
It's just, the, the reason for the, the ordinance is basically just reaffirming and confirming the county's membership and participation in the Pennsylvania County's Risk Pool organization. We've been, the county has been a member of this pool since 1998, and periodically we've been asked to basically reconfirm our membership in it. It all kind of states back, it tracks back to the compliance with the Intergovernmental Cooperation Act of 1996.
And there's been some changes to the coverage document over the years, and so it's essentially reaffirming to ratify or recall the changes that they're asking.
I make a motion to approve ordinance 60.
I have a motion, okay. I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 60. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adoption of the ordinance indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
So ordered. Thank you, Chris, for coming in.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And...
We have Paul DeJude, he's the Director of Research with Uniplan, which we were talking this morning and just trying to see when last time was he was here. He was here a number of years ago, we thought it was two or three years, but I think it's more like four or five years. So he's going to give an update on the Real Estate Investment Trust portfolio that you guys have here in a few minutes. I'll start by just giving a quick update, and Mike's going to give a, give a more update, but I'm going to, if you go to page one of your reports there, where we normally start out at, top left-hand side there with the bar chart, just to kind of review the performance, you have combined portfolio, which is all the different managers that we have for the pension. Quarter return and year-to-date numbers are the same, obviously, because this is just through the first quarter of this year. It is 10.13% is the return. One-year number is 7.42, and then a three-year number of 7.63. Over to the right side, just kind of more in a number format, if you want, instead of percentages. That first column under quarter-to-date, so at the beginning of the quarter, it could be ending 2018, December 31st, 2018, the balance was 114,319,000. And during that timeframe, there was withdrawals of 2.1 million. There was appreciation of 11.5 million, which again gets you back to the 123,740,000. You can see the numbers to the right of that are just the one-year numbers, one-year, so if we go back to April 1st of 2018, your balance was 120,816,000. Through withdrawals, as well as your art payment that you made, you had a net number of withdrawals of 5.8 million. Appreciation during that time of 8.7 million, and then again, the balance where we're at today at the end of the first quarter of 123,740,000 again. Any questions with that part at all?
No questions.
Sounds pretty good.
Okay. Bottom, bottom left-hand side is pie chart. We always kind of comment on this, at least anyhow, it shows your allocation, probably one of the most important parts of trying to put together your portfolio is, your equities there are listed at 66.95%, and we always mention that the report does not break out the REIT portfolio, or actually the piece that Paul's here to speak about today. So your equity exposure is actually 61.17. The investment policy statement comments that 60% is the high side, and Mike's going to comment about that here in a few minutes. So we're just a little outside that range of just a little over 1% currently. The REIT portfolio represents 5.78% of the portfolio. Fixed income is 29%, and then cash is at 4%. I just want to comment on one more thing here, too. If you notice, alternative is listed there at the bottom, that's typically not a piece that shows up there, it did show up this quarter. We are familiar with what that is, it's a company called Enbridge, if you can see, it's four one-hundredths of a percent, but we just wanted to comment on it. It's actually a Canadian company that deals with different types of energy, propane energy, green energy, and things like that, and that just showed up as an alternative. So if you kind of have any questions on that, we'd be happy to address that, but just wanted to make comments that is a little bit different than what we've seen in the past. Any questions with that? All right, with that, Mike, you want to go ahead and pick up and give a more update number?
Sure, yeah. Give, so again, Brett reported that's the quarter end, the first quarter, those are all audited numbers, the numbers I'm going to give you are not audited because we're not doing the quarter yet, but we continue to have some growth in the month of April. So now the balance as of the end of April is 126,011,730 dollars. And the return, year-to-date return then, except 13.2%. And again, we also had another distribution, so the withdrawals were about 20 million. So it's come out of the plan so far.
So does that come off the 126 million?
No, the 126, what you have in there, that's already accounted for.
That was already taken off, because you said it last night, I thought we still did take it off.
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
One of the things that, you know, Brett had briefly mentioned there, is that we are slightly over the upper range of our equity holdings according to our investment policy, about one and a half percent, not significant. There have been times, actually through the financial crisis, where we kind of stayed out of, not within our ranges, and we just kind of let things take course. The imminent may work out. Right now, we're kind of looking at where we've come. We had a significant downturn in the fourth quarter, we've had a great tremendous upside here to date, and we believe it would probably be proving at this point to take a little bit off the equity side. We're recommending 3 million dollars off the equity side. 2 million, we would probably recommend putting just in cash for the next several months, distributions that we know we're going to need, and then moving a million dollars over to the bond manager, the CSPK. Still hopeful that the markets will continue to grow to year-end, but we think there's probably more, more risk to the downside, just because of the money we have.
Maybe so. Yeah, I don't think you would need any action on that, the policy's in place, you're hearing as managers to the policy itself.
It sounds like a conservative move. I don't think I object to that.
Any other questions about working, Sam, or?
Okay.
So I think at this point, we'll turn over to Paul, and he's just going to provide some insight into the piece of the portfolio that Dave managed, which is the Real Estate Investment Trust, or the REIT portfolio.
Well, thank you. Again, my name is Paul DeJude, and I'm very happy to be here today. It's a pleasure to address a client that has money invested with us. I don't get the opportunity to do that, I usually talk to the advisor, so this is, this is a lot of fun for me. And we thank you for your participation in our portfolio. Let's just quickly, I'm going to talk for about 15 minutes, I understand I've had that amount of time. Let's look at what a REIT is, a Real Estate Investment Trust. It's a collection of professionally managed properties, usually the same type, and you could think of it as kind of a real estate mutual fund. The manager will purchase and manage a number of properties, or another client, probably. So you've got people buying real estate in different places, buildings mostly, although there are farm REITs now, but mostly buying them in different parts of the country to diversify risk, also to take advantage of the local real estate situation. The best feature, as far as I think your concern really is the rising stream of dividends. This is what we really like to talk, highlight when we're talking about REITs. A REIT must pay out 90% of its income, or they lose their tax status. A long time ago, the government set up a program in place to offer REITs tax benefit in order to spur growth and development. That's worked out very well. There's now about 220 REITs in the country. In return, they insisted that they return, in return for the tax benefit, they insisted that the REIT pay out 90% of its income. So it's a very good deal for them, and it's a very good deal for shareholders. If you find a REIT that has rising earnings, you'll find a REIT that has to pay out more than you, and you're obviously getting more and more income, especially over time if you reinvested that dividend. So the benefits are rising stream of dividends, it's not fixed like bonds, you're going to get more each year should the REIT goes improve, a superior yield to most other investments, and diversification. So let's take an update and see what's worked and what hasn't worked. Overall, it's been a very good quarter for REITs, we're up about 17%. This is the end of March. So the first quarter did very well. We were oversold in December, we were down 4% for the year, and we've been recommending REITs, all of a sudden they've taken off because of Chairman Powell's declaration that there would be no interest rate hikes in the near future, which is very good news for real estate. So an REIT index, which is what we've benchmarked against, was up 17%, and we were up about 16.7. We have a little bit more cash to reinvest, but it's not a significant difference, of course. Since I was here last, February of 2014, your REIT portfolio has advanced 25% in the last five years. That doesn't include dividends. So if you include the dividends and the growth of those dividends, you're adding another 10 to 15% on top of that, and if you reinvested those dividends, you're getting another 10%. So basically, you've made 50% in the last five years in terms of total gain. We believe that's a very favorable return, given some of the other investments who zigzagged much more than real estate. In fact, real estate is the second-best returning asset class, going back to the last 20 years, real estate has advanced 11% year, each year. NASDAQ has advanced annually 12%. I would suggest there's more risk involved in the NASDAQ, and far less return as far as dividends. What's worked in our portfolio? Well, digital-related REITs, those are cell phone towers and data centers. You can see about this, as the rapid growth of digital takes over, it's on fire, it'll get even more intense when we have autonomous cars, 5G, these things are just getting started. The digital side has done very well. Equinex is a property we own that was up 29% for the quarter. American Tower, up 25%. We have a healthcare name called Alexandria Real Estate, they provide life science labs across the country, even in Manhattan, that was up 25%. So those have been some of our winners. Some of our less stellar picks, what didn't work, storage, self-storage, and hotels. If you think about it, this area has been overbuilt, and there's more intense competition in even both of these categories. Hospital properties was down 12% on no news, except the hospital supply has gotten up to a point where room rentals are getting a little soft. And the Jurgen Capital is a storage REIT, where we've got an area that's pretty much overbuilt. We had owned public storage, that got to be up 7% weight, we cut that in half about a year ago, it's proven to be a very good decision. But think of the logic of these two portfolios, and there are these two asset classes. Cell towers and data centers are very difficult to build, high technology, only a couple companies in either business, lack of competition. But self-storage and hotels, of course, intense competition, easy to put up, easy to lease. So if you think about it, those areas are far more prone to overbuilding and have more competition. Data centers and cell towers, a few companies doing extremely well. I'd like to offer a special word for the retail segment, because it seems to be a concern of a lot of people. Mall operators are, contrary to popular opinion, doing extremely well if they're in the right location. And we always look at the location of these REITs before we look at too much else. So malls in good locations are 95% occupied, believe it or not. When the Sears goes dark, it doesn't necessarily mean the mall is in trouble. In fact, the mall could be doing so well that the mall operator pays Eddie Lampert 10 or 12 million dollars to break his three-year lease and say goodbye, so they can reposition that real estate, that big part of the mall into a gym, into an urgent care center, office, apartments, you name it, anything, they can pay more than Sears, because the anchor stores pay, take out about 50% of the mall, because they were the big Kahuna's 10 years ago, eight years ago, they signed very favorable leases, in fact, they only pay 5% of rent. So the Hallmark down the hall is paying 100 dollars, and these guys are paying 5 dollars for a foot. Obviously, we get Sears out of there, and we can start to release at much better rates. So even if Sears goes dark, isn't necessarily a sign that we're in trouble. The other thing they're doing is monetizing these huge parking lots that they built years ago, and they're putting up hotels on those properties, they're putting up electric condos or apartments, they're certainly getting more from those properties than they did payment. There's another sector of retail, though, that you have to consider, and that's the shopping center. These are strip malls, if you will, and if you look at the signs on your way home today, you're going to see barber shop, nail salons, kickboxing, maybe a post office, a financial institution, a tax repair. What do these things have in common? They're all services. So until Jeff Bezos can figure out how to cut hair online, these properties are very safe. They're Amazon-proof, we would go so far as to say, and they're the growing part of retail. Our weight is 5% in some of the properties, the premier mall operator, in fact, the premier REIT in the country, many people think, and 30% in strip malls. So we've got a 15% weight. When I was here last, we had a 25% weight. Now we have a 25% weight in the tech REITs. So times have changed, we have to work with them. If this is, is there any questions up to this point I don't want to tell you?
I have a comment.
Yes?
You said you enjoyed coming here. I'm enjoying you. You're the first guy to bring home exactly what people want to know and what they're talking about. I mean, this is really interesting. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that. Thank you. I appreciate that very much. Thank you. I don't get that much media feedback, very often. Let's take a look at the outlook for this REIT asset class. We were looking for a 5% to 6% increase. That is kind of out the window, since we already had the 17% increase this quarter. Now we're looking for maybe an 8% to 10% increase this year. Obviously, we've exceeded that, too. I'll get to that in a moment. It's important, however, to look at the REIT fundamentals. No new building, supply is constrained, demand is growing because of the rising economy. So they just aren't putting up that many buildings. The economy hasn't been red hot enough for somebody to say, I'm going to spec it later and put up an office tower, and I hope they come. If you see a property going up of any size, they've probably already leased it out to a major tenant. In fact, they probably have naming rights, and most of the building is leased, they're not taking a chance at this point, and they're not taking a chance for another reason. When the supply is constrained and the demand is rising, of course, their lease rates are going up. So it's a very favorable time right now. The REIT fundamentals are extremely strong. Interest rates are low, the economy's picking up, and we've done this in a 2% growth. Well, imagine we have 3% to 3.5% in economic growth, we're going to need room for, more room for everything. We're going to need more room to shop, more room to live, apartments, senior centers, storage places, we're going to need more places to work. So the whole real estate world should improve if the economy starts heating up, and despite perhaps a higher interest rate hike, but we don't see that in the future, certainly. What can go wrong with REITs? Let's talk about the risk angle, because it's not all rosy, we don't all go one way. But what we should watch out for in the REIT asset class are the following warning signs: overbuilding, rising interest rates, rapidly rising interest rates, and inflation that grows rapidly. Right now, none of those are in place, none of them. We don't have overbuilding, we have low interest rates, we don't have rising rates for, in fact, we're targeting straight cuts. And we certainly don't have inflation, as evidenced by Chairman Powell just yesterday. So this is a pretty rosy picture for REITs. It looks very positive, I painted a very positive picture, I think, of this asset class, but there's one more thing we need to consider, in fact, you need to consider with every investment you make, and that's valuation. What are we going to pay for this investment class? It's already run up 17%. We think that we're getting kind of close to fair value. I mean, it's like a stock running 50% in three months or a half a year. So there's times to buy and there's times not to buy. Right now, valuation comes into question. And what do you pay for a house with low interest rates but in a roaring seller's market? What would you pay for a shirt that costs $20 one day and you go back in a month and it's $50? You'd probably wait, you'd wait for a sale, right? Well, that's what we're kind of telling people right now. We're not telling people to trim, but we aren't saying, you know, back up the truck. If you don't have a REIT position, we would recommend 1% to 2% getting your feet wet. If you do have a REIT that's weight, probably 5% or 6% is recommended. We get much hotter, and we're going to over-fee valuation, then we're going to be saying trim. We are not REIT from a vault, we don't always say buy, buy, buy all the time. We think REITs have a place at every portfolio because of the factors of rising dividend stream and diversification, but there's times to buy and there's times not to. Right now, this is probably a full-valued market. So we're saying, you know, keep some powder dry for later, or maybe sell a little bit and then wait for the pullback, which will inevitably come. I don't know why, but it will come. So let me conclude by saying, we think REITs have a place in most portfolios, we're a very dayrolling asset class, the fundamentals are very strong, the valuation is a little high. We do not have an impact on the prices of REITs, the market does that. What we can do at Uniplan is buy the best REITs we possibly can, in the most favorable areas we can, with high dividend growth and a record of high dividend payout. That's what we're concerned about. We're concerned that you get total return, a lot of it from the dividend growth. Of course, we like price hikes, too, but our main interest is seeing your check hit fatter every quarter, every year, if we can. There are times when REITs have been down, that hasn't been true, but certainly not at this point. You've got to buy the right REITs. You have to decide the weight, we just buy the REITs. And these two gentlemen will do an excellent job of determining what weight works best for you. With that, I would say thank you for your attention, and I welcome any comments or questions. At Uniplan, we value your trust, and we certainly have enjoyed your investments here for, what, eight or 10 years, so we're very pleased. There are times when REITs have been down that hasn't been true, but certainly not at this point. You've got to buy the right REITs. You have to decide the weight. We just buy the rates. And these two gentlemen will do an excellent job of determining what weight works best for you. With that, I would say thank you for your attention. And I welcome any comments or questions. At Uniplan, we value your trust and we certainly have enjoyed your investments here for, what, eight or ten years? So we're very pleased that you've chosen Uniplan. Thank you.
Can you spell your last name?
It's D E, capital D E, capital J, U, T E.
Thank you.
And I have some handouts here, too. I've got a first-quarter report. I've got a report on the import, and I have a fact sheet to tell you the first-quarter snapshot if you'd like. I've got plenty for anybody. These are the first quarter and these are public records. If anybody wants to take home a copy, they're welcome.
Thank you.
Any questions? We're all, we're good?
I thought it was great.
Well, I appreciate that very much.
Thank you very much.
It's been a pleasure to be here. As always.
I would agree with Commissioner Litz. It was one of the better presentations that we get on the market or elements of the market.
Our investments, yeah.
Pleased to be very much. And again, I've always enjoyed coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. If there's too many, I can take one. You're welcome. Enjoy. Enjoy this room.
You, too, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Donmoyer is joining us. Commissioner Phillips.
Yes, good morning. My name is Jim Donmoyer. I'm the executive director of Lebanon County Commission on Drug and Alcohol Abuse. I'm here today to discuss with the commissioners two agenda items, first of which is the 2018, 2019 contract amendments. I provided all the commissioners with a copy. There's only one amendment that I'm asking for you commissioners to approve, and that's for a provider by the name of Turning Point. Turning Point has two facilities, one facility for males and one facility for females. At both locations, they provide short-term as well as long-term treatment. So I'm asking the commissioners to approve this contract amendment so we can have a contract with Turning Point in the event that we need to sense over there for short-term or long-term treatment.
So we have no contract with them at this point?
That's correct.
Okay. It's not a change in rate?
No, it's, the rates are as listed. We're just adding a new service provider for these services. There's no cap involved. We pay per D M S, per day, that people are there.
I'll submerge it.
I have a motion, Commissioner Phillips.
I'll second the motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve Turning Point as a provider under the prevailing rate that we've been paying. All those, are there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
Thank you. The second item on the agenda I'm here to present to commissioners is National Prevention Week, and I'm looking for a proclamation from the commissioners. National Prevention Week is an annual health observance week. It not only looks at drug and alcohol, it also looks at mental health, areas of needs. The week of May twelfth to May nineteenth is this week that I'm talking about. The theme of the week is inspiring action, changing lives is a call to action that everyone is responsible for prevention, whether by making healthy choices in your own lives or inspiring others to do the same. Prevention is everyone's job. I provided the commissioners with a memorandum with that wording on it. I also provided Jamie with a proclamation with the wording. I would also like to point out on the memorandum, each day of that week, there's a listing of Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday that week, and it describes what's going to happen each day during that National Prevention Week. My staff along with prevention staff, Compass Mark, will be out at the Lebanon Mall each day presenting whatever the theme of the day is. So we will be not only asking for proclamation, but again, we will be putting action to that proclamation in the main at the mall every day during that week of May twelfth through the nineteenth, actively promoting prevention. So I'm going to ask that, is proclamation be entered into or drafted?
Whereas Lebanon County commissioners are committed to promoting a drug-free lifestyle in Lebanon County through drug and alcohol prevention services for the residents of Lebanon County. And whereas Lebanon County Commission on Drug and Alcohol Abuse and Compass Mark will provide prevention services and will participate in the National Prevention Week. And therefore, we, the commissioners of Lebanon County, do hereby proclaim the week of May twelfth through the nineteenth, 2019, as National Prevention Week in Lebanon County and further encourage all our citizens to unite in helping Lebanon County become a drug-free community.
Do I have a motion to adopt that proclamation?
I'll move it.
Second?
All right, I have a motion and a second to adopt the proclamation as read. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the proclamation indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Proclamation is adopted. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks. Thank you very much, Jim.
See you next week, I guess.
Thank you.
Sorry, next week.
It's not?
May twelfth.
May twelfth. So it's not next week?
Two weeks. Thank you.
I just have a couple of things. I'll pick a couple of bits here and then we'll run it behind the election board once to get in here. First I have is a grant agreement and assurance of compliance for the 2019-2020 Medical Assistance Transportation Program. Essentially, this is ensuring that the county will comply with all the requirements of that grant, of the grant provided drivers for medical assistance eligible. Concerned?
It's an additional contract.
That's a renewal of the order nineteen-twenty.
I'll make a motion to re-adopt the M A T P contract.
I have a motion, Commissioner. All right, I have a motion and a second to renew that contract. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? No, that was an aye. Motion approved. That was a tie line.
Okay, next, I have a request for your approval to designate the Lebanon County Historical Society as the official county historical society for Lebanon County. They receive twenty thousand dollars from you as an allocation from the general fund budget, and this designation allows them to apply for, potentially for state grants with designation.
I'll submerge it, remove the designation of the Lebanon County Historical Society as our official historical society.
All right, I have a motion and a second to designate the Lebanon Historical Society as our official historical society. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered.
I have a request for authorization of payment for the Act 137 Affordable Housing Fund. This is for repairs that have been made through the Community Action Partnership to the county's own transitional housing residences. And there were some various maintenance and repair items and some roofing work and so on to matter as he contracting the amount of nine thousand nine fifty-seven oh three.
Second?
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the allocation of those funds for repairs. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then I have an application for county's Liquid Fuels Aid from Mill Creek Township for 2019 general road maintenance. They're spending four thousand dollars in their allocation toward, that would be three thousand eight ninety-two.
I'll make a motion to award the liquid fuels to Mill Creek as presented.
I have a motion and a second to allocate those liquid fuels funds to Mill Creek. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So ordered.
And lastly, I don't know if you had a chance to look over this closely enough, but I'll throw it out if you want to throw it out there if you want to act on it today, your certain, certain may. That is a hotel tax grant fund application from the Stites City Players. And they are putting on a production of Godspell at the Bethson Memorial Amphitheater at Paul Memorial Park in mid-October. And the total cost of this production would be fifteen thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. They're asking for a grant of ten thousand dollars toward the production and the promotion of the production. And they noted that in the past, they had put on a production of Stephen Sondheim's Into the Woods, which was in 2017. It was a great success and drew an audience from surrounding counties. So they're asking for your support in that grant. If you'd like to act in there, okay?
It's a pleasure.
Well, it's within our ten thousand dollar range, and I'd like to see some statistics. We have some that address this better than others, but it's not over the amount. And they do have in here about destination for quality performing arts productions. We believe this would benefit our town and counties a whole in terms of dollars going to local businesses and restaurants, as well as increasing overall interest in Lebanon County. So with that in mind, I will submerge to approve the ten thousand dollar request.
Wait, I.
Hold on a second. Yeah, okay. Is there a question?
I just, I believe you said mid-October? The performance is actually mid-August. I don't know if it makes a difference.
It says August on here.
Make sure it's accurate. Okay.
Yeah, it does say August.
Okay.
I thought it was an O, not a capital A. It was, sorry.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were accurate or we do that.
Yeah, August sixteenth.
Thanks for pointing that out.
Kind of like an October.
Commissioner Phillips, where are you in this one?
I would say firm second.
A firm second.
A firm second. Could I, if we're, I have a motion and a second as discussion because I'm somewhat concerned, too, that we don't have any real documentation about, you know, what is happening as far as folks coming from the areas outside of the county and, you know, expenditures and so on. So I'm going to vote in favor of this, but could we, along with the affirmative vote on this, if we could specify that they provide us with additional information?
That's follow-up.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. You okay with that, Commissioner Phillips?
I am.
Okay. All right, with that said, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of giving the tourism grant to the Stites Players, all indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So ordered.
Board of Elections will be following your meeting.
I will motion to adjourn.
Voter registration. I am here today to seek your approval of the notice of municipal primary election that I would like to publish in the Lebanon Daily News and the Humble Town Sun, which would then meet the requirements of the election code for two daily newspapers. This election notice not only shows the offices that are to be nominated for the primary, but then also some voter information that is going to be very important for individuals to know with the upcoming deadlines, and then a list of the sixty polling locations. And so I want to make that request to publish those. I am looking at May ninth for the Humble Town Sun, since that's a Thursday publication, and May tenth for the Lebanon Daily News.
Any questions?
I have two, if I may. So the notice and listing of polling places being presented to us, I think, and these are the same as we received previously, correct?
Yes, they are.
Okay. So second question then regarding the Humble Town Sun. So that qualifies as a daily newspaper?
Yes. Yeah, we had some research done on that by our solicitor, Attorney Warner, because we previously, a previous director had used the, wow, this is going to break out, the merchandiser. And the merchandiser was deemed not eligible to meet based on, actually, because it's not considered a daily newspaper. So he did some research on that and he actually made the recommendation, just because it does reach the, that part of the county.
Okay. Thank you. Well, with that in mind, then, I'll make a motion that we approve the primary election notice for 2019 and polling locations and authorize them for advertisement as Michael recommended.
Second? Polling paper? Aye. Opposed?
Okay. Do you mind if I just do a couple of public announcements, so I got to do at the end?
Go ahead.
Okay. So just a couple of reminders for upcoming deadlines. The last day to apply for civilian absentee ballot is May fourteenth. The last day, and so it has to be in our office at five o'clock on the fourteenth. Postmarks do not count. And the last day for my office to receive the voted absentee ballot is May seventeenth. That is the Friday, and that is also at five P M. So that we will be here to accept any of those ballots. I encourage anybody that is going to vote by absentee ballot to do that sooner than later. Just a reminder that with the way the post office is now, there really is no next-day mail service anymore, and so please don't rely on that. And then the last reminder is that the election is on Tuesday, May twenty-first. Polls will be open from seven A M. to eight P M.
Right. Yes, sir. I was wondering at what time they can come in to apply for their absentee ballot, vote the same day here at the courthouse?
Sure. So my office is open eight-thirty A M. to four-thirty P M., and they can do that absolutely anytime up until the fourteenth, because they would have to have their application in by five o'clock on the fourteenth.
So today they could do that and anywhere October fourteenth?
Yes, they can.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, sorry. Evening, Commissioner.